Good morning, Directors Nelson, Bianco and Estrada. Can we just do a quick mic check, make sure we can hear you in the boardroom?
Sure, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you, Director Nelson. Director Bianco?
Can you hear my typing?
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Director Estrada?
Yes, I'm here.
Perfect. Thank you so much. We're good.
Thank you. Peter?
Yes, sir.
Hey, um...
Are we good to go?
And we have a hard stop at 11:00. Costello has a call and I have to be on my call with him, so that works out.
Oh, I think 11 is very accommodating, accommodative of possibility. Good. Well, then I'll call as an order the study session of Coachella Valley Water District Board of Directors here in Palm Desert, August 3rd. I can't believe it's August 2021. And this meeting is being held in person and by Zoom, live streamed on our district website. I don't have a script today. Oh, maybe it got sent to you instead of me. You want to read it?
I'm sure, yes, sir. Whatever you want.
I think I need to read this. I would like to make clear for the record that this meeting is being conducted by teleconference pursuant to the Brown Act waivers provided for under the Governor's executive orders in response to the COVID-19 state of emergency. Today's meeting is presented in a hybrid format, both in person at CBWD's Steve Robbins Administration Building and via Zoom. The Governor's executive orders N25-20 and N29-20 suspend certain requirements of the Brown Act, and district board members and staff may choose to participate in person or by video conference. I think I've already mentioned that. Members of the public who wish to comment on any item on the agenda have three minutes. Public comment may be provided in person via Zoom or by emailing the clerk of the board in advance of the meeting. If you are on Zoom, please use the hand raised feature to get our attention. Some such comments will become part of the board meeting record. And there will be no action today. It's only a study session, but I'll make sure to call on individual directors to make sure that they are able to participate. There's an agenda somewhere, too. I'm guessing we have a Pledge of Allegiance coming up at some point. Yeah, I called as an order already. Why don't we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? How do I have these things?
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think maybe we need to put names on this side.
You got, well, I got my pillow. And then roll call, please.
Good morning, President Powell.
Oh, here it is. Here.
Vice President Estrada?
Here.
Director Bianco?
Here.
Director Aguilar?
Here.
And Director Nelson?
Here.
Okay. So, yeah, so we have all five board members in attendance. Two of us are here and three are on attending virtually. And we have one item of study today. Did we have any public, anyone wishing to make public comment at this time?
Hey, John, I have a quick question. It came up while we were in the waiting room. Is crew going to happen in person this year, or what's happening there?
Yeah, crew is supposed to happen in person this year in Vegas.
Okay, great. Thanks.
In December. Yep. That's what I hear.
Yeah, thank you. Good.
Stay tuned. Yeah, I'm not sure I would, I wouldn't book non-refundable airfare or whatever at this point. All right, so did we have anyone in public? I didn't hear any.
I don't see any. We do have a few participants, attendees on the line. If any of you are interested in providing public comment, if you could please use the raise your hand feature, and I will unmute you.
Well, just let me know if we do. All right, so presenting today is Zoe Rodriguez Del Rey. We have the Indio Sub Basin and Mission Creek Sub Basin Alternative Plan Updates. Floor is yours.
Thank you. Good morning, President Powell, members of the board. So, we've been working diligently on the Indio Sub Basin and Mission Creek Sub Basin Alternative Plan Updates. And we are doing this board study session to bring the board up to speed on some of those elements of those updates, particularly as it relates to demand and supply assumptions. And so before I begin, I do want to thank the consultants that have been helping us on this effort on the Indio Sub Basin, Todd Groundwater and Wood and Curran, and for the Mission Creek Sub Basin, Wood and Kennedy Jenks. Also want to thank the other groundwater sustainability agencies, which I will henceforth refer to as GSAs.
Zoe, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I got a message from Director Estrada. If you could speak up or if we could raise her volume, please. Thank you.
And I will also get way closer to the microphone. So, as I was saying, I'd like to thank the other groundwater sustainability agencies that have been participating in these alternative plan updates. We have a lot of material to cover today, and this is just focusing on an area of the update, so I will try to move through things quickly. I do encourage the board to ask questions along the way. But I'll also be trying to practice some time management to get us through all these slides by 11:00 a.m. So with that, I will go ahead and proceed. So what we see here is a timeline of CBWD's history of compliance with the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, going back to 2014, September of 2014, when Sigma was signed into law. As the board knows, we had existing water management plans for the Indio Sub Basin and Mission Creek Sub Basin that were submitted as Sigma allowed as alternative, alternative to a groundwater sustainability plan. And those were submitted at the end of 2016. About two years later, in July of 2019, we heard from the Department of Water Resources, DWR, that those plans had been approved as alternatives. And as Sigma requires, we immediately began to undertake the first five-year update. That first five-year update is due to DWR by January 1 of 2022. In the interim, we've been in as one of the few agencies that has approved alternative plans. We were kind of on the forefront of submitting annual reports and have been doing that for several years. And we'll be doing our next one by April of 2022. So the Coachella Valley has taken a collaborative approach to complying with Sigma in both the Indio Sub Basin and Mission Creek Sub Basin. On the left, we see the boundary of the Indio Sub Basin and the GSAs, which include Desert Water Agency, DWA, Coachella Valley Water District, CBWD, Indian Water Authority, IWA, and Coachella Water Authority, CWA. And these agencies collaborated in submitting the alternative plan, but they're also collaborating in preparing annual reports and working closely to update the alternative plan. In the Mission Creek Sub Basin, the two GSAs, DWA and CBWD, have been working collaboratively with Mission Springs Water District through a similar process. There's quite a few benefits of working collaboratively that includes being able to coordinate on management. And we've seen this as we've started to see other areas prepare GSP. There is also quite a bit of streamlining when it comes to Sigma compliance, when you collaborate behind a single plan for a sub basin. There is also data sharing. There's some cost-sharing benefits to all agencies. And, you know, this is just a really good approach that we're all collaborating. It also means that as we prepare these alternative plan updates that we are getting inputs from all of the GSAs and participating agencies in the shape of this update. So briefly, what does this update involve? Well, first of all, it required an assessment of the existing plans and then to update those. And what we mean by update them was to look at water demand forecasts. How were those holding up relative to what the 2010 Plan, Coachella Valley Water Management Plan, and the 2013 Mission Creek Garnet Hill Water Management Plans had forecasted? Also looking at water supply projections and seeing what that means, both in terms of being able to meet projected future water demands, but also in terms of addressing overdraft, having a balanced groundwater basin and meeting the sustainability goals of Sigma. We also, when the plans were approved, we received recommendations from the Department of Water Resources, DWR, and we needed to address those as well. As part of this assessment and update, we also looked at all of the projects and management actions that were part of those initial plans and updated them, based both on the findings of projected demand and supply. In other words, changing conditions from those planning assumptions, but also to update plans or projects that were not included in the initial plan, an example being the Palm Desert Groundwater Replenishment Facility. And we also needed to integrate some of the Sigma-specific projects and management actions that are required to support implementation of the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. So I'm going to begin with the Indio Sub Basin. You'll notice that there's a lot more detail in this particular section of the presentation. And that is in part because, first of all, it's a larger, more complex basin. There were more recommendations. But also because a lot of the assumptions, and particularly as it relates to supply, dovetail in to the Mission Creek. So there's been a lot of coordination in those plan updates from everything, from the modeling to demand assumptions and supply assumptions.
Zoe, is that the last official update we've had, January 2012?
Sorry, are you referring to the 2010 plan when it was?
You had a photo on that last slide, and it showed January 2012.
Oh, okay. So, yeah, so we normally refer to the Coachella Valley Water Management Plan as the 2010 update, but it was finalized in 2012. That is the last official update that we've had. In the interim, there were two status reports prepared that already started to follow some of the trends that we'll talk about today, such as modifying projected demands. And those were prepared in 2014 and 2016. But as far as a comprehensive plan update, the 2010 finalized in 2012 was the last time for the Indio Sub Basin, and the Mission Creek Garnet Hill finalized around 2013 was the last update there.
And you'll probably cover this, Zoe, but that plan was the basis of the alternative plan that we provided to DWR under the Sigma requirement. We had to do bridging documents to make it an official alternative plan, but I don't know whether you'll get into that level of detail or not.
Yes, I will get into that level of detail elsewhere, but I guess I could just, you know, kind of cover that right now.
I don't want to disrupt your flow.
Oh, no, no, no.
Yeah, 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 no. I just had a question if that was the last official plan, and it was, so we had a couple supplementals after that. Thanks.
Yes, so for purposes of Sustainable Groundwater Management Act compliance, the act did allow basins that had existing water management plans, were adjudicated, or could show that they had already achieved sustainability for a certain period of time, to submit alternatives. For Coachella Valley, for the Indio Sub Basin and Mission Creek, there were the existing water management plans that formed the basis of the alternative plan. But as Mr. Barrett stated, there were also bridge documents created to crosswalk the alternative plans or the existing water management plans with the requirements of Sigma. And there were also other supporting documents that were submitted. For example, our engineers' reports that for many years had been doing the function of doing the groundwater balance for the sub basins and broken up by area of benefits. So that whole package together is the alternative, but the foundational plans were these water management plans. So this slide shows the plan area for the Indio Sub Basin. And this is similar to the plan area for the Coachella Valley Water Management Plan 2010. It includes the whole of the Indio Sub Basin as well as adjacent areas that currently, or in the future, might be served by groundwater pumped from the Indio Sub Basin. This includes the communities on the east and west side of the Salton Sea, as well as some areas further up the basin that are within the sphere of influence or boundary of IWA and CWA that in the future might receive their source of water from pumping in the Indio Sub Basin. So the plan area allows us to look at demands on the groundwater basin in a comprehensive manner. So why the need to update water demand forecast? So on the left here, we see the projections that the 2010 Coachella Valley Water Management Plan made in terms of population growth. And so I'll run through some stats here. The 2010 Plan projected that by this year, 2020, that plan area would have about 614,000 permanent and seasonal residents, in that that would increase to about 1.1 million by 2045. You see embedded within this graph that the 2002 Plan, which predated the 2010 Plan, had projected a lower level of growth. But at the time that the 2010 Plan, that they started putting it together, which it uses 2005 as the baseline year, there was just a tremendous amount of growth, and this is what the local communities, municipalities were projecting in terms of growth. So what that translated to in terms of demand was that water demands were projected to increase to about 719,000 acre feet by 2020, and continuing to increase to about 885,400 by year 2045. In reality, we know that that population growth and water demand since the 2008 recession has been much slower. And so when we compare 2020 to projected, our current population within the planning area is about 509,000, 510,000, or 21% lower than projected. And in terms of water demands, as we presented in the last annual report, combined water demands are about 595,000 acre feet per year, about 17 lower than was projected for a similar period. So lots of elements playing into this, slower population growth as we get into 2020, but also slower growth projected within the planning horizon. And it's a good time to say the planning horizon for this particular update is through 2045. So slower growth projected. And then our efficiency in water use has also increased. So we see a trend with each of these plans, that particularly when it comes to municipal demands, but other demands in other sectors, the factors get lower, and so you can accommodate more population per, you know, water unit. So those are different factors playing in the water demand forecast that I will be showing you next.
Okay.
So just touching on this briefly, on the, on the left here, you see the projected development in 2010 by general area. And then on the right, we see what is currently being projected by the Southern California Association of Governments, which is the foundation for the data used to update the plan. That information does take in local general plans from cities, municipalities, counties, et cetera. And so in 2010, particularly in the thermal oasis area, it was projected that about 300, up to 300,000 new inhabitants would be added to that area. When we look at current projections, that element has gone away from the projections within the planning horizon of 2045. And instead, population growth is expected to happen more as infill around the existing cities, particularly the area of the city of Coachella, city of Indio. And then some level of conversion of, rather than development of idle lands, conversion of some existing land uses to urbanization. So quite a different picture in terms of development within that planning horizon of 2045. So this next slide shows what the updated growth and water demand forecasts are by 2045. As you see here, the new baseline year is 2016, but setting that aside for a moment, it's projected that in terms of permanent and seasonal residents, the planning area. And, you know, this is an important point. This is a plan for the whole of the This is a plan for the whole of the Indio Sub Basin. So it does incorporate the growth and water demands of the entire planning area. And it does so, too, with water supply. As you know, we do collaboratively manage parts of the Indio Sub Basin with Desert Water Agency, but now under Sigma with other GSAs. So just going over some, you know, just some brief statistics here. By 2045, we're projecting population at about 721,000, or an increase of 42%. And how that translates in to demand projections, the table here, as well as the graph, shows the demand projections by different major sectors. And one thing of note is that the growth is expected to happen primarily in the municipal sector, with an increase of, you know, roughly 55,000 acre feet or 30%. And then with those conversions of some ag lands to urban, you see a decrease in And then with those conversions of some ag lands to urban, you see a decrease in agricultural demand, a big change from the 2010 plan, lots of conversations with the Gulf Water Task Force, Southern Association, Southern California Association of Gulf. The growth in the Gulf industry that was projected in the 2010 plan is not expected. It's at best expected to stay fairly stable. And there are a few water supply assessments that added Gulf courses, so those have, those types of projects have been included when we look at these future water demands. So.
Zoe, I have a quick question.
Yes.
On the permanent and seasonal residence, the, this, this chart that I'm looking at is a total of just that, permanent and seasonal residence? And then, do you have a sense of, at least for our district and for, let's say, Desert Water Agency?
If that's a total there of permanent and seasonal, what's, um?
The percentage of seasonal, is that like, for our district, is that like 10%? 5%?
Let's see, so probably, let me hold on to the question. I don't know that number off the top of my head. If I could pull out my calculator, I could probably do a quick estimate.
2020 to 2045 on population is 42% increase overall, and demand during that same period is up 7%.
So getting to the question of, sorry, so getting to the question of seasonal residents?
Let me finish my question so you can answer it as you answered the, you're going to answer, but where I was getting to was I was just trying to get a sense of how you incorporate seasonal population if it's a percentage of what a permanent resident would be? Do you count on this half? Do you count on this quarter? What do you do then?
Okay, so thank you for the question. So the way that this was incorporated was a little bit different than in the 2010 plan, which just came up with a population estimate. The approach that we have used this time is to look at housing unit development, and so rather than developing a gallon-per-day-per-capita estimate, we've developed a housing unit estimate. And so the way that, you know, the way that the seasonal population is developed off of that is by, by looking at the information from the travel bureaus, et cetera, to kind of get an estimate of what that population is, but the water demands themselves. So the population is a percentage, but the water demands themselves are based on housing units that are expected to be built in the area. And I know that we have Rosalind Prickett on the line who developed these demand estimates, so if you need more detail than that, she can hop on and perhaps give us a little bit more information.
I'm okay with, I'm okay moving forward.
Yeah, so demand is based on housing units, and it's purposely done that way so that you don't end up with a bias for seasonal residents. The seasonal resident component is, how you get at the population is basically like, it's based on an estimate of housing occupancy. There's a lot of components that go into it, seasonal housing occupancy, tourism data, et cetera, to then try to come up with a factor that you can increase the projected permanent residents. And for us.
That was my point, Zoe. Zoe, I think that was my point, if it's not a big percentage of the overall population, then it's probably not that significant. I guess that's what I was trying to get at. Is it 5%? If it's 5%, then that variability doesn't really have that much of an impact.
Yeah, and unfortunately, I don't have the number in front of me. I believe it's in the 15% range, but I'll have to look that up more exactly and get back to you all with that particular question.
Thank you.
However, in terms of combined housing units, it is an important part to include. Otherwise, we would be underestimating the projected, you know, not just the current per-housing water demand, but also what our future water demands might be. So getting to the next element of this, we do see that 30% increase over, in the municipal sector, over the planning horizon. However, when it comes to total demands, we're only seeing, projecting a 7% increase, and that's in part because agriculture is going down. So we're adding more population, the water demand doesn't track one-to-one because we expect higher efficiency. These municipal demand estimates do include what we're calling passive conservation. So this is the effect of, for example, our landscape ordinance, higher efficiency of new homes, and an additional element, which is the expected replacement of indoor plumbing features to be more efficient over time. So over time, people replace their toilets, showerheads, et cetera. So it does include that element of passive conservation. So when you put all of that together, you do end up with only a 7% growth, but it is, you know, it's still, we're looking at about 40,000 acre-feet per year of total increase Okay, so the next element was the need to update the water supply assumptions. The 2010 plan, when that was being created, the 2010 Coachella Valley Water Management Plan, situations were very different. We were in a state of overdraft, and what was being projected was a tremendous supply gap. Think back to that demand of 880,000 acre-feet plus per year. As we get into this update, the situation is very different. We do not have overdraft, as we've been presenting to the board over the years. If you look at the last 10 years, on average, we've added about 50,000 acre-feet per year to storage, so we have, over the last 10 years since this plan was finalized, a positive groundwater balance. And we're also not projecting a supply gap, but there's a different piece that's different, and that's sort of increased supply uncertainty. So we've seen decreases in average state water project reliability, possibility of shortage conditions in the Colorado River Lower Basin, changes to local hydrology when you look at more recent data, and just in general, the need to consider those impacts of recurring drought, climate change. And I'll share with the board that as we've had public workshops, which we've been having throughout this process, public workshops with stakeholders, as well as with our SIGMA tribal work group, one of the feedbacks that we've been receiving, and as well in the recently submitted Regional Urban Water Management Plan, one of the biggest comments that we've been receiving is the need to consider impacts of climate change and what we see with regards to changing hydrology. Other things that needed to be updated, there are new projects that weren't considered in the 2010 plan, like Lake Parasepich recovery, Site's reservoir. Without that supply gap, we can defer projects at one point to meet that supply gap. There was the plan to desalinate purged groundwater in the East Valley up to 90,000 acre-feet. Recycled water development has been slower, so that needed to be updated. So all these things together are the elements that make us need to look at those water supply assumptions as we assess and updated the alternative plan update for the Indio So I'm going to quickly go over some of the things that we've observed in the data and how those are being incorporated. Our planning assumptions or the scenarios that were modeled do take climate change into consideration. And so these next sets of slides will kind of walk through the foundation for some of those assumptions. So with regards to watershed runoff as measured at the various stream gauges that are located within the Indio sub-basin, if you look at the 50-year average, the measured amount plus the part that needs to be estimated, because not everything is gauged, is about 50,000 acre-feet per year. If you look at the last 20 years, and you can actually extend that to 25, and it's a similar trend, that drops down to about 30,000 acre-feet per year. So we have been seeing a drier hydrology with less estimated natural infiltration, but also what, you know, the foundation for this are actual measurements at stream gauges.
Zoe, so I have a question about this. With the 1, 2, 3, 4, four super-high runoff, watershed runoff years, would that be, that would add to the 50-year historical average, help get it up over that 50,000? If you, if you looked at effective watershed runoff in terms of water recharge, I would imagine that those years, a lot of that watershed runoff just went out to the Salton Sea through the Whitewater Channel. Would I be making a fair assumption in that if you took those years out, the actual effective recharge of runoff, would the difference between 30 and 50 might be a little bit less if you took those years out?
Yes, certainly, I think, you know, just by, what I would say eyeballing the graph, if you take those years out, you would, you know, that would definitely drop that average to a number closer to 30. Now, in terms of going to the Salton Sea, we do have two additional gauges in the Whitewater River Channel and its extension into the Coachella Valley Storm Channel. So there are estimates of about how much of that, of these particular type of runoff events are making it to the Salton Sea, and it's estimated, I will need to check that, but it's in the, it's about 3%. And so a lot of this, even when you have these big events, you're still getting quite a bit of, quite a bit of recharge, but I, you know, I will agree with your point that if you were to exclude those very wet events that don't seem to be happening in the last 25 years, that, that is exactly one of the things that's contributing to this lower amount. But with regards to groundwater modeling, we do subtract the amount that's estimated to go out to the Salton Sea.
Oh, great, thank, yeah, great, thank you, Zoe.
So with regards to the Colorado River, our Colorado River QSA entitlements, they are the largest amount or pot of imported water that the Coachella Valley has. And while it has been an extremely reliable source, and CBWD's priority is high, there's worsening hydrologic conditions on the Colorado River. And so it seems important when we model potential future scenarios to at least consider the ongoing drought and potential effects of climate change as, as we look at different potential future conditions. So we've considered, you know, the full allocation, the 424,000 acre-feet per year, plus the additional 35, which is the Metropolitan Water District State Water Project transfer. We've accounted for conveyance losses, which are about 5%. And we are assuming the 5,000 acre-feet per year that goes to MET as part of delivering part of the allocations at the Whitewater River Groundwater Replenishment Facility through 2026. But we've also incorporated some of the, as part of the climate change assumptions, we've also incorporated some of the lower basin drought contingency plan contributions that CBWD would need to make, beginning in, you know, based on current projections that could be as early as 2023, so that has been incorporated and increasing up through the, through the tiers. So this is the climate change assumption, just to make sure that we are, you know, considering some of the pressures on this particular supply.
Zoe, a quick question. What's that 5,000 acre-feet per year transfer?
So as, as part of the last agreements with, exchange agreements with Metropolitan Water District, and certainly Robert Cheng is, can add anything if he feels that I don't answer this adequately, but as, as part of those new agreements, MET can deliver part of the Metropolitan Water District IID Colorado River Transfer Water, 20,000, which is 20,000 acre-feet per year at Whitewater. And part of the agreement is that they would retain 5,000 of that 20,000 transfer. And currently, that agreement goes through 2026. It, you know, future negotiations could look at that, but right now, for, for this particular alternative plan update, we've assumed that it goes through 2026.
Okay, thank you.
So with regards to state water project reliability, DWR's latest capability report projected long-term reliability at 58%, declining to 52% by, in the 2040s, if the delta conveyance project is not constructed. In reality, I've shown a couple of different averages here. If you go back to 2000, it's actually 55. And if you look at 2007 through present, approximately 15 years, and since the Wanger decision, the actual average, including this year, has been 45%. We've also seen that within a seven-year window, we've had two 5% years. And climate change, additional delta pressures could reduce that even further if the delta conveyance project is not constructed. So for, for this plan, we have assumed a 45% reliability with some very minor additional, it's about 1.5% reduction under climate change assumptions. And that is, that 1.5% is fairly moderate, because the 45% already incorporates quite a few hydrologic conditions. So we are using that 45% with climate change, adjusting that, it ends up, like I said, it ends up being about 1.5%. And this feels like a much better planning assumption to start with, more prudent than going with 58, reducing to 52. So this slide shows state water project supplies. What you're looking at does include CBWD and DWA's allocations. What you're looking at does include CBWD and DWA's allocations. You're looking at, in this particular graph, you're looking at that 45,000, which puts us, you know, at about 85,000 acre feet a year on average, on average. And it, it does include, as we move, and we'll be talking about the, the different scenarios that we modeled shortly, but as we look into the future, we do incorporate the addition of Lake Parasepich recovery by 2025, sites reservoir by 2035, and construction of the Delta Conveyance Project, which would increase reliability by 2042. State water project supplies, everything that falls under that window, are allocated between the Indio sub-basin and the Mission Creek sub-basin in accordance with the 2004 settlement agreement. Currently, on average, that's about 8% going to the Mission Creek Groundwater Replenishment Facility. Based on projections, that increases to about 10% because growth and therefore pumping is expected to be relatively higher in the Desert Hot Springs area than in the West Whitewater River Management Area. And that allocation for the 2004 settlement agreement is based on pumping in those two areas.
Zoe, what is the Yuba Accord?
So, the Yuba Accord is, it's an additional, I guess the best way to describe it, it's an additional, oh, there we go.
Is it even on this? This is gray, I don't see it.
The number is 600 on average over the last decade or so. It has been 610 acre feet per year.
Where is it on this graph?
You just can't see it, but, but we did include, we did include the average in the projection.
Director Aglar, to answer your question, it's a special contract set up by the state water contractor slash DWR with Yuba County Water Agency. We funded some projects up there for source substitution, for them to release water into state water project during extremely dry years. So I think this started probably like in the 90s. CBWDD has participated every year in this. So as the numbers show, it's not a reliable supply, but I think this year we're getting, you know, a modest amount from that. I'd say less than 1,000 acre feet, so.
Thank you. It's just for some that heard it, so.
Of course.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on to recycled water. Recycled water remains an important local supply that reduces aquifer pumping. There's also side benefits to recycling our wastewater, in, you know, primarily related to water quality and eliminating percolation of wastewater into the aquifer. When you look at the period of 2018 to 2019, the, the three facilities in the Indio sub-basin that currently produce recycled water delivered about 14,000 acre feet per year, which is about 2% of the overall water demands for the Indio sub-basin and planning area. When we look at existing tertiary capacity and projected flow increases, that could increase to over 20,000 acre feet per year. And based on projected growth increases in wastewater flows, that, that leaves from current facilities that don't recycle wastewater or reclaim wastewater, as well as from those growth flows, it, it could leave an additional 42,000 acre feet per year of potential recycled water supply. The 2010 plan looked at more aggressive conversion, integration of recycled water, non-potable connections. There hasn't been the need to do these because the growth just hasn't matched the projections, but this is a potential supply. And whatever connections are planned, whatever projects are, are within the planning horizon are being incorporated to a degree. So I'll talk a little bit more about that.
Zoe, not to be critical, but you may want to increase the tempo of your presentation.
Will do. So in terms of, you know, the board has seen these slides before. We present these every year. It shows that over the last 10 years implementing this plan, we have seen increases in groundwater levels as well as a positive increase in, in storage. And that average, which is a critical indicator of sustainability, has been positive over the last 10 years, as I mentioned, on average 50,000 acre feet. So these are the type of conditions that we want to maintain with this alternative plan and what is being considered as we updated this plan. So with regards to, you know, one of the critical elements of SIGMA is groundwater sustainability. So with regards to the groundwater balance element, we look at projected demands, projected supplies. We use the groundwater model that exists, which I'll talk about briefly, to develop groundwater balance for different planning scenarios. The goal that was included in the 2010 plan of meeting demands, municipal demands with a 10% supply buffer are, are carried forth to this plan. So we are using the Coachella Valley groundwater model. It has been updated for the period of 2009 through 2019. I'm not going to go into the technical deal, details of the model, but I did want to show that, just briefly, that the simulated heads or groundwater levels that have been measured really match the, those predicted by the model, both in the West Valley and the East Valley. And so we have a really good groundwater model to be able to simulate potential future conditions. So in terms of modeled scenarios, there were five scenarios that were selected for modeling. They include a baseline scenario. That baseline scenario includes current supplies and current projects that are on the ground. So it's the, if we do nothing else, kind of condition, but demands do increase over the planning period. And then we have baseline, but with climate change assumptions. We modeled near-term projects. Those are those that are planned within the five-year capital improvement plan, things like Oasis, Palm Desert Groundwater Replenishment Facility Phase Two, a number of non-potable connections. And that includes climate change assumptions. Then we did a future scenario, which includes all of the projects that were, you know, that were projects and supplies that are currently planned through 2045, source substitution projects, full implementation of Oasis. And we bring in those additional state water project supplies or increased reliability with construction of the Delta Conveyance Facility Project. And then a final scenario was if you take that future project and you increase agricultural demand, what happens? And that would involve the development of an additional 8,000 acres of idland. The reason to include that is that there's been a lot of questions with pressure in other areas of California with agriculture. What would happen if that was one of the drivers for agriculture increasing in the East Valley? So we wanted to look at that. Okay, so this first set of, this first set of slide presents results and, you know, this is a summary of the results. And what we're seeing on, on the left-hand side is inflows and outflows. So on the upper part of that graph, inflows and outflows, and what is the net change in groundwater storage on average over the 25-year planning horizon? And then on the right, we look at the cumulative change in storage. So when we look at that 25-year average, under the baseline, we are on average seeing a net increase or the balance on average is a positive 28,000 acre feet per year. But when you incorporate those climate change assumptions, it, it drops to about 1,500, so very much in the noise of planning assumptions. And then when we look at cumulative change in storage, I do want to point out something before I go over that graph, which is what's called the 25-year stress test period. SIGMA requires 50 years of modeling to show that you can maintain sustainability with your assumptions in the planning horizon under a set of hydrological conditions, wet, dry years, et cetera. So that's what you'll see in each graph in the blue box is that 25-year stress test. So under baseline conditions, we see at the beginning, storage increases moderately to about 500,000 acre feet. And then as you test it through some wet or dry periods, it does begin to decline. When you look at the climate change assumptions or that baseline with climate change, you're just hovering at that zero line. And as you test those conditions over time, you do begin to lose storage. So return to, to overdraft. The next four slides are going to look just at four wells in Cathedral City, Palm Desert, City of Indio, and the Thermal area. So our storage and groundwater levels are very related to each other. So you see a similar pattern where groundwater levels are lower with the climate change. But based on assumptions of water usage, you, you get a different spatial pattern throughout the Indio sub-basin. Generally, things are a little bit more stable in the West, but you see that as you move to Palm Desert with the climate change assumptions, as you, as you do that test, stress test period, you do start to get declining water levels.
Zoe, in all these slides, it looks like there's an increase in the baseline modeling year '27, '28. Is that because Phase Two of the Palm Desert Replenishment Facility goes in? Or what drives those two lines to separate so dramatically starting in '27, '28?
So let's.
It's pretty apparent if you go back two slides.
So, so recall that right now we're looking at the baseline, so it doesn't have, it doesn't have the, the Palm Desert Groundwater Replenishment Facility. So, you know, the model is running through a set of conditions and you get this.
And then the divergence there starts in, it's, you know, there's one point in time where climate change has a pretty dramatic effect.
So you're getting, you're getting increasing demands and so.
Demands mostly.
Yeah, so that everything else, in the baseline, we're not assuming any additional projects. What you do is you start getting that demand increase. And so you really start, you know, you really start to diverge as.
Okay. I just thought there was one particular issue, but.
And when you, when you look at these specific, when you look at these specific hydrographs, another reason that they diverge that would take a lot of detail to get into is you start moving water back to the east that we're currently taking advantage of in the west, like the 35,000 acre feet. So you will see that as we move down to the East Valley, then the projections are that under, under the climate change assumption, but even to, to some degree under the baseline, you, you do get declining water levels. And in the case of baseline, in some cases, those would eventually return down to historical lows.
Thank you.
So in terms of, again, that near term, the projects that are planned in the next five years, future, which includes the full suite of projects that are currently planned within the planning horizon, and expanded AG. In terms of groundwater balance, for the near term, you end up on average with a net, with a positive groundwater balance of 16,500 acre feet per year. For that future, that incorporates higher state water project reliability and towards the end of the planning period sites, that increases to about 21,000. For that expanded AG, you do have higher demand based on current per acre use, that's estimated 8,000 acres of production would increase demands by about 40,000 acre feet per year. So that balance lowers to about 12,000 positive on average over that 25-year period. And then on the right, you see that cumulative change in storage. We are able to remain positive, add a, a reasonable level to storage under both near term, focusing on near term, but also with expanded AG of about 500,000 acre feet, which is about two years of what we currently pump, to put it in, in some perspective. Now with the future projects, as the increased state water project reliability from the Delta Conveyance Project comes in, you do, you do start to see a ramp up in cumulative change in storage. But just as a reminder, we're also not increasing demands over that period. So if demand were to happen higher, if that project gets pushed out further, any series of conditions that could happen could easily change this outlook. But what we can show is that under these three different planning assumptions, within the planning horizon, we are able to stay sustainable, avoid overdraft, and meet water supply demands for the basin.
So just, I wanted to be clear. So on these different modeling scenarios, the future, each one includes the prior one, right? I mean, the future includes the near-term projects.
That is correct.
The expanded AG includes the future and the near-term.
Correct.
And they all include the climate change assumptions. So, so the, 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 the future and the expanded AG are kind of the two fully loaded ones.
Correct.
Yeah.
One with an additional 40,000 acre feet. And, and you know, one could say, okay, if you have faster growth, that, that particular scenario gives you a window into the fact that you can accommodate more demand.
Yeah.
Where it happens in the basin would be slightly different, so I wouldn't draw a lot of conclusions about the placement of that demand when we look at the, at the next set of slides.
Good.
So again, same set of hydrographs, Cathedral City, Palm Desert, City of Indio, Thermal. And to President Powell's point, the expanded AG does include future assumptions, so that drives why those lines kind of separate out after 2042, when there's increased state water project reliability and you've been getting that benefit of water from sites.
Good luck.
You know, don't, don't necessarily want to draw a lot of conclusion from this. This is where the model gets a little bit tricky. We're able to make general conclusions, but remember, we're putting demand and recharge in particular parts of the model. So it's, you know, just more broad conclusions that we can draw from this, but what we see is that we get increased groundwater levels that stabilize and. And as you go into the stress period, with all the future assumptions, you can get additional increase, but again, you're holding demand steady. So it doesn't account for, you know, additional growth that might happen beyond the planning horizon. And we see a similar pattern throughout, albeit more attenuated in the East Valley, where, you know, under all conditions, we're able to gain some storage, increase groundwater levels some, and maintain those sustainably, not go below historical levels, which will become important in subsequent slides. So that's, you know, just a 10,000, 35,000-foot summary of the planning assumptions, demand, et cetera. So as with the 2010 plan, the alternative plan update really updates all these planning assumptions. The scenarios are used to simulate a range of potential conditions to ensure that forecasted demands can be met while maintaining not returning to overdraft. And with SIGMA, being able to achieve those SIGMA sustainability goals, avoiding significant and unreasonable results. But we still maintain the flexibility to implement projects as needed, whether that be speeding up, slowing down, as was done with the 2010 plan. And SIGMA in particular provides a very robust framework for doing that. We're doing this update, we'll be implementing the plan. We're, you know, continuing to monitor as we've always done, including enhancing some of that monitoring. We'll be reporting on an annual basis and evaluating what we're seeing so that we can adjust as needed. So that flexibility, we're not locked into anything. We can still use the same adaptive management framework that has been being used. So I just wanted to briefly go through these. DWR did have specific Department of Water Resources, did have specific recommendations. They wanted us to have quantitative thresholds for groundwater level, storage, and subsidence. This sort of mimics the framework of SIGMA in which you have to establish minimum thresholds. In other words, a level you will not go below, because if you go below that level, you expect to have significant and undesirable results with regards to chronic groundwater levels, lowering of levels, storage, subsidence, and saltwater intrusion, water quality, et cetera. So they asked us for these types of quantitative thresholds for, like I said, groundwater level, storage, and subsidence. And the approach that has been taken is to look at the historical lows at 57 key wells and to use that historical low based on actual measured levels as the level that we do not want to go below. This is for the Indio sub-basin where there has been subsidence and there... This is a very prudent approach because we can say up to these levels, the negative results were not significant or unreasonable. So it's a very defensible position. So this next slide shows the location of the 57 key wells. They're very well distributed throughout the sub-basin. And the other element of minimum threshold is for SIGMA, not being sustainable doesn't mean we're, you know, we're not meeting objectives at one well. It has to be over a significant part of the basin. So those minimum thresholds have been defined as being 25% of wells. And we also want to give ourselves the flexibility to react. This is a big sub-basin where sometimes management actions take a while to show results. So that minimum threshold at 25% wells over five monitoring seasons. And starting with the next set of annual reports, we'll begin to report on levels at these 57 wells relative to those minimum thresholds. Minimum thresholds are not what we're managing to, it's what we don't want to go below. DWR also requested that we map water quality constituents of concern for this alternative plan. There's been quite a bit of groundwater analysis done. We've mapped eight constituents of concern that were identified by a mixture of DWR, the 2010 plan, as well as conversations among the GSAs. So there'll be cross-sections showing the vertical distribution for some constituents, time plots for some of those that are, you know, potentially changing in some areas over time. And I'm not going to go into detail here. This is just an example of the type of maps that we're creating to meet that DWR request. DWR also requested that we integrate and approve Coachella Valley Salt and Neutrum Management Plan. So as the board is familiar with, there are now eight water and wastewater agencies collaborating to update the 2015 Coachella Valley Salt and Neutrum Management Plan. The first step in that was to finalize a work plan that would define the scope of work that we are going to take to update that plan. And that has been submitted to the regional board, and we're working through our comments to finalize that. We'll be providing the regional board a presentation at the end of August. And they also requested a more detailed groundwater monitoring plan that has been created, submitted, approved, and it's already being implemented. So we'll be able to report on that in this update, as well as continue to report on that with our annual reports. Saltwater, salt and sea, saltwater intrusion was something that was identified in the 2010 plan. And DWR wanted us to kind of move us towards an objective with regards to that element. In reality, what we're presenting is technical data because conditions have changed from the 2010 plan. Groundwater levels are higher, the salt and sea has receded. So when you look at that head differential, starting in about 2015, there's minimal saltwater intrusion, and there's actually a greater net flow to the salt and sea. Agricultural drains, they were included in the 2010 plan because they're having that higher groundwater levels, pressure, pressurized lower aquifer, leading to higher drain flows, as well as the salt export that that contributes to is beneficial. So it was included in the 2010 plan. And the DWR ask, should there be a minimum threshold associated with this? Our answer is no. This is a proxy for beneficial conditions. All of the modeled scenarios show continued increasing drain flows. But we want to look at this relationship in more detail, and it's more likely that some direct measure like groundwater levels would be a better metric of the intended positive benefits than actual measurements of drain flow. And finally, they asked us to map groundwater-dependent ecosystems. This has been done by analyzing data that was prepared to support the SIGMA process. And those maps and conclusions will be included in the alternative plan update. So moving on to the Mission Creek Sub Basin Alternative Plan, as I mentioned, this will be briefer because it incorporates many of the assumptions that we have already gone through. So the plan area includes the area that you see in this map highlighted in green. And essentially, that includes the GSA area for the Mission Creek Sub Basin, but also the areas in desert hot springs that are being served, or in the future, if there's additional development, would be being served from groundwater pumped in the Mission Creek Sub Basin. Just a reminder that because of the nature of how that particular initial Mission Creek Garnet Hill plan was created, that there is an overlap in the Garnet Hill. And while this Mission Creek Sub Basin Alternative Plan update retains the Garnet Hill, anything being done for that area has been coordinated with the team doing the Indio Sub Basin Alternative Plan. The Garnet Hill sub-area per DWR is part of the Indio Sub Basin. So with respects to SIGMA compliance, it was important to include that area in the Indio Sub Basin Plan. So with regards to population projections, we see a similar story here where what was projected in the 2013 plan has not happened. When we look at current projections, we are looking at an increase by 2035, but it's more moderate. And it involves interesting, very similar population increase to the Indio Sub Basin, although, you know, focused in a different area, with population increasing by 2045, approximately 45%. In terms of water demand projections, municipal, again, forming the sector where increases are expected. There is some private pumping in the Mission Creek Sub Basin. Right now, there isn't really any foundation for us to assume that, based on the type of development that's expected, that that element would increase, so that has been held steady. So when you combine this outlook, it is an increase of about 5,000 to 6,000 acre-feet per year over that planning horizon period, or approximately 33%. The sources of supply, a much simpler system when you look at the Mission Creek Sub Basin. But you do have that same element of natural recharge and that same trend of decrease in that natural local replenishment from mountain front recharge, decreasing, if you look at the 50-year average, about 18,000 acre-feet per year. And if you look at the last 25 years, that's down to 12, just over 12,000 acre-feet per year. I touched a little bit on how state water project supplies are allocated per the 2004 settlement agreement. So the amount that goes to Mission Creek, based on that agreement, does increase over time as a percentage. And currently, there are no, besides the improvement in reliability, there are no major actual physical projects planned. Mission Springs Water District is planning a recycled water project. And that recycled water project is actually in the plant, it's called the Regional Wastewater Treatment Plan, is actually in the Garnet Hill sub-area. So this affects the balance because you're, over time, you're moving what would be return flows to the Mission Creek Sub Basin, you're moving them to Garnet Hill. But their plan is to bring them back to the Mission Creek, either as an indirect potable recharge or direct deliveries for non-potable uses. So similar to Indio Sub Basin, we have a groundwater model, is a well-calibrated groundwater model that's being used to look at projections and the groundwater balance, groundwater levels. The red line shows the model domain. It has been expanded to include desert hot springs, which is a good thing because one of the things that DWR is very interested in is flows of potentially higher salinity water from desert hot springs into Mission Creek. Again, similar to what I showed for the Indio Sub Basin, you have modeled groundwater levels or heads versus measured. And, you know, just a very well-calibrated model, one that we feel confident in terms of using for looking at a range of future scenarios. In terms of modeled scenarios, it follows a similar theme as in the Indio Sub Basin with baseline and baseline with climate change assumptions. A little difference here is that the wastewater, the wastewater treatment plant is already on route to being constructed and permitted. So that has been incorporated. It's so in the near term that that has been incorporated into the baseline. Near-term projects then basically includes taking that, the only near-term project that has been identified, is taking that back from the Garnet Hill sub-area, taking it back to Mission Creek, and using those wastewater flows as a recycled water source by Mission Springs Water District. Future projects, it's primarily supplies, increased reliability, sites, et cetera, that are incorporated. And so this is a slightly busier graph because it shows all inflows and outflows over a very long time period. But it does give us an opportunity to illustrate something that we have done. And we've done it both in the Indio Sub Basin and in the Mission Creek Sub Basin in terms of modeling. In terms of recharge variability, both natural and imported, the consultants have used a more recommended approach used by USGS, where you use typical natural variability for natural recharge. So the patterns that you've seen, to capture that variability so that you have, you know, a closer idea, you're better able to look at the response of the basin under variable conditions rather than just assuming that those are a steady number. However, when we talked about assumptions, things like 45% for state water project reliability, this variability essentially averages itself to that 45%. So we're still using this notion of average assumptions, but adding annual variability to it. So here, you see the results for the baseline scenario and baseline with climate change. If you focus roughly on the middle of the graph, the planning period starts with a drier cycle. So both under baseline, you do see some reductions, and then as you get into a wetter cycle, that goes up. And by the time that you get past that stress period to about 27, then you're adding about 60,000 acre-feet of storage, or, you know, roughly what is pumped in a three-year period. With climate change, again, you get that initial reduction in storage, but you are actually going below the zero line because you're recharging less. And then you put it through a wetter period, and you do see some recovery. But by the time that you get to the end of the stress period, you are essentially back in overdraft. And again, similar to Indio, you're not increasing demands. So when you really need to take that into consideration, you're just taking the same demand and seeing how it does over time with different
Zoe, I have a couple of questions. Just on the bottom of this graph, is ET, is that evapotranspiration?
Yes, that is evapotranspiration.
So why would, just a question, why would the evapotranspiration go up in wet... So why would, just a question, why would the evapotranspiration go up in wet years and somewhat lower in dry years?
So I believe that what-
So I'm looking specifically at-
I believe that perhaps-
Through 2026, I was looking at 2026 through 2030, and that green line goes up to a couple mountain tops, as well as, but the hydrology goes up too. And then through 2034 to 38, it goes down as well as the water volumes.
But it's water loss to evaporation, not-
So let's try to work through this because I think that what you're looking at is actually, if you go towards the legend, towards the far-right side, that's actually annual change in storage. The ET component or evapotranspiration is so small that you actually can't really see it on the graph.
The green line is not ET.
Yeah, the thicker ones are bar graphs, and the two things that are line are annual change in storage and cumulative.
Oh, okay, so that thick, bold line is climate change storage, not-
Change in storage.
Correct.
I got it.
In the legend, the thicker lines are part of the bar graph, and if you can, you know, ET is such a small component that at this scale, you really can't see it. What you're seeing is that annual change in storage.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, I'm zooming in and I see the, I see the ET. Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Yeah.
So again, this near-term project, all it does is bring that recycled water that used to be return flows to Mission Creek. It brings it back in to Mission Creek. And so even though we're seeing some declines, if we were to enter, you know, a consecutive set of dry, a dry cycle like we've seen before, we do manage to stay just above the zero line. And when you cycle through the entire 50-year period, you end up with projected cumulative change in storage of about 60,000 acre-feet. When you move into future projects, and remember, the higher reliability comes in at about 2042, that's the assumed date. So you see a similar pattern in future projects with climate change, but then after 2042, it really takes off. And, you know, these assumptions are based on that split, that's based on the 2004 settlement agreement. Let's just say that what we're showing is that under those sets of conditions, the Mission Creek sub-basin, that as long as that water comes back and if there's increased reliability, if there aren't further decreases, the Mission Creek sub-basin will be sustainable with regards to storage levels. So I only, for Mission Creek sub-basin, I only picked two wells, one in the upper part of the Mission Creek sub-basin and one closer within CBWD's GSA area, closer to where we have our pumping wells. And under, both of these wells show that under baseline conditions, you get declining levels. And if you project that out over time, and this is again, without even considering further increases in demand, you would, you would fall below historical levels and even possibly past the minimum thresholds, which I'll talk about shortly for the Mission Creek sub-basin. Under the near term, in the future, you know, we're able to either maintain groundwater levels or increase them, similar to storage, and that really picks up after 2042 during the stress test period. So a slightly different approach to minimum thresholds in the Mission Creek sub-basin. Just a couple of reasons that I want to mention for why we're using this different approach. The Mission Creek sub-basin is a smaller sub-basin. There are less wells that can be used as key wells without having a well everywhere. So you have to be cognizant of the game of percentages. But in addition, unlike the Indio sub-basin and the Mission Creek sub-basin, there's never been, you know, a recorded history of subsidence, et cetera. So we can integrate a little bit more flexibility into the minimum threshold. So we're showing a representative well here. The vertical line is when recharge was started. And you see that the green line looks at not the historical, although often that it's equivalent to the historical, but 2009 levels. The 2013 Mission Creek Garnet Hill actually put forth 2009 as an objective. So in the review of this plan, DWR, their recommendation is just show us how you're going to measure and report that you are meeting that 2009 objective. So there's going to be nine key wells. The objective is the 2009 level is measured at these wells, but the minimum threshold allows us to go below that one standard deviation. So it integrates the variability of individual measurements at wells. Historically, different parts of the sub-basin, depending on how far away they are from the recharge facility, really have marked difference in terms of what we've seen in terms of fluctuations in groundwater levels. And so this next slide shows the distribution of key wells. Again, even though there's only nine wells, you have a very good distribution of wells. And the minimum threshold is being defined as crossing, in other words, that minimum threshold where we believe that we would have significant and undesirable results, is being set as three consecutive years at four of the wells, or 45%. Again, because it is a smaller sub-basin, you can sort of right the ship somewhat faster. And so that's why we're using three years instead of five. Similar to the Indio sub-basin, the key wells will also serve as a proxy for storage. There hasn't really been evidence of subsidence, so we weren't asked to set a minimum threshold for subsidence. But it is something that we're starting to look at to make sure that we can definitively and defensively say that there hasn't and isn't subsidence in the Mission Creek sub-basin. And again, we'll be reporting on all of this on an annual basis, these levels, minimum thresholds at key wells. So in terms of next steps, we will be having a draft alternative plan update for agency review, more or less mid to late August. That's the first time that we'll see the full document prepared for internal review. We'll be having another public and tribal workshop roughly in late August. And then we'll move to public review, which currently is planned for late September, public review period of 30 days. And during that public review period, we will be having public and tribal workshops to present everything fully and, you know, to have an opportunity to answer questions or receive additional comments. We are planning to bring both plans for board adoption on December 7, and then we will be submitting by January 1 of 2022. The other GSAs also need to have their governing bodies adopt the plan, and that's included in the schedule. I believe right now, it's Coachella Water Authority and DWA are the first ones that will be bringing it for adoption right around the same time. So with that, that concludes my presentation and happy to take any additional questions on anything that has been prepared here, any feedback from the board on the approach that we've taken.
I just have one, first of all, very impressive work. Thank you, Zoe, for that. So my question really relates to your last point regarding the other agencies that we're collaborating with. So as they go through their process of adoption and hearings, I mean, are there modifications made based on each jurisdiction? And if there are, how does that affect our plan and how does that interact?
So we, when we, our plan is that when we, when we bring this to board, on, when CBWD, when staff bring this to you all, on the 7th, it will be a final plan. The internal review period, the public review period, the additional public workshops, that's the time that we will incorporate comments. And I know, you know, we have this study session, DWA is about to have a study session. I haven't heard on the timing of when other agencies will do their study sessions, but there's a lot of review periods integrated into this to make sure that when we come on the 7th, it is, you know, a final plan with no further edits. So that is certainly something that feedback is appreciated on as we get closer to the public review period, when we'll have, you know, a draft admin version. If there's anything that you all want us to come back to and present in a similar setting or in a shorter version at a regular board meeting, that's something that we will definitely do.
I know you and Steve and Melanie have been very instrumental in guiding and, I won't say controlling, but keeping the consultants on track. And I noticed that there's nobody here from any of the other GSAs for your presentation to us. Are you going to be attending the CWA or the IWA or the DWA presentations to their board? Or are they going to have their own staff do that? Or how does, how do you think that's going to work?
So the only model that I have right now, where they have definitively scheduled one, is DWA. And we have shared this presentation with them. You know, of course, they're fine-tuning it to things that their board-
Maybe sensitive to.
Maybe sensitive to, I mean, et cetera. But we're definitely collaborating on that and I, you know, will definitely plan on attending those or watching them and recording if I happen to have prior-
But not necessarily presenting. I mean, you have taken a very strong leadership role in the conduct of these plans, studies and consultant work. And so I was just wondering how that kind of bled over to the other GSAs. I think we're very fortunate to have you here to participate in these, and I just didn't know whether they were counting on your same participation or not.
So far, no, but like I said, with, you know, with Desert Water Agency, we're really closely coordinating. I mean, obviously, you know, two of the agencies importing water have management agreements for the West White Water River sub-basin. So there's been a lot of close coordination among all the GSAs. I know that I've been talking to them as they prepare for their first board study session. But should anyone need, you know, any of the other GSAs need any support in presenting, you know, certainly, this is a collaborative effort and the materials that are available to us are available to all, notes, input, even a guest appearance.
Understood. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. I think we had a question from the director on the-
We did. So Director Nelson in the chat asked, in relation to the SWP reliability, this plan appears to go from 58% to 45%. Is this a CBWD move or a statewide perspective? Please discuss further.
So let me first of all clarify that I included the DWR capability report number as a, you know, just as a general reference. In reality, the 2010 plan assumed 60% reliability, dropping to 50, without the construction of the Delta Conveyance Facility. So A, we have not actualized 60% over the last 10 years. And based on the data, we think that 50 without some real, without, you know, the projects being built and the reliability being addressed, we think that even the 50 is, you know, just not, doesn't put us in a very safe comfort zone in terms of planning. Is it a statewide approach? I don't think that I can fully answer that. I know that, that folks may be integrating the 58%, but I also do know that people are also looking at other scenarios. And so at the end of the day, what we're really looking at here is the planning scenarios that were developed in collaboration between the GSAs with input from executive management in collaboration with DWA, scenarios that we felt and assumptions that we felt put us in a good condition in terms of looking at what might be coming down the pike.
So you're, I think what you're saying is that the 45% number was developed locally. It's not something that the state published?
Well, it's actually, I guess you can say the state has published it in as much as it's the actual number that we've seen since 2007. So we're using actual data instead of model data.
So local construction.
Yeah, right. We constructed it locally collaboratively with your group-
Correct.
-based on recent data.
And if the folks in the back could put slide 13 up on the monitor, if you've got a keyboard, just push one, three, there you go.
Yeah. We can see how, so you used math to get to that number. You took an average of those years.
Correct.
Yeah, it seems reasonable. I mean, it makes me a lot more comfortable than 50.
It's not as rosy, though.
No, but it seems more realistic.
Yes.
Sadly.
No, I would agree, I would agree with John, and thank you, Zoe, for the explanation. You know, kind of my question revolves around, I mean, it's the same thing we do with the OPEB, right? The agency, CalPERS, they have a projection and it's based on, I think, more anecdotal evidence, and it appears that this 45, and so we use 5% in that case versus their 7%. And so in this case, this is actual, actual, we're not going under at that 45%. So I appreciate the explanation on that. Thank you.
Yeah.
That's not good, but, but, but good.
Yeah.
I have a question. This is Anthony. Great presentation, great job. Thank you very much. This is a lot of work. The only numbers that I'm concerned with is the population growth. So in the next 25 years, we're looking at adding projected 210,000 residents. And doesn't that seem high?
Yeah, if you could put slide nine up, please. I think he's looking at the difference between 2020 and 2045.
Yeah.
So Director Bianco, the way that I would answer that question is, these are planning assumptions. And, you know, clearly, we don't have a- And, you know, clearly, we don't have, you know, we don't have a crystal ball. So we're choosing assumptions that we feel support good planning. If you, you know, if you take the last 10 years, the 200 seems like a lot. If you go back to the conditions under where the 2010 plan, where, you know, population growth, I think, was projected to average 4% per year based on what had been observed, then you would say that maybe we're being a little bit too conservative. I think we've tried to strike a balance. And, you know, I would point out that, for example, something that has been coming up a lot, you know, just in the last year and recent months in a different area, is this housing element component. So when you look at the housing element component in the Southern California Association of Governments saying, hey, this is how much, you know, this is how much growth we expect in Southern California. This is where we think it's going to happen. This is how many homes we think, you know, you should plan for building. Then some people might say that we're being, you know, we're not being conservative enough. So the other piece is we're looking at a planning horizon of 2045, which is 25 years. Whether that happens faster or slower, when you look at the city's general plans in longer term, I think we will, we could easily, I don't want to say we will because that's too assertive, but I think we could easily get to that number. And it feels like a very prudent number to plan to.
I mean, I would only offer that, you know, when you go back through the new meter install data in the general manager's report, I think it was about 2004, 2006, we were installing about 4,000 new meters a year. Now, honestly, we have not recovered from that. Recently, I think we've been doing about 800. But we are, we are on track to do over 1,000 this year. Again, it pales in comparison. But there are some pretty big developments that are now beginning to visit us much more frequently. You've got University Park in Palm Desert. You've got Section 31 across from Sunnylands in the Anameric State in Rancho Mirage. You've seen on the news the talk about Coral Mountain in La Quinta. I'm not aware of anything in Coachella or India right now, but I'm sure they've got stuff. We're just not their municipal water agency. So the visibility there is not as great. But I do think, you know, we're kind of on the cusp now. And with COVID, you see the trend for a lot of folks to reevaluate their current situation in high-density areas to consider, you know, being able to work from home. I don't know how that's actually going to be reflected here. We're not a land use agency, so we kind of have to rely on others. But I can see an uptick from where we were, you know, in the last 10 years since I've been here.
And the projections through 2040? I'm sorry, please go ahead.
This report, I mean, is rosy, I mean, to me. I mean, this is a very good report. It reflects on our, on our, on our desert and our planning. And it shows an increase of 40%, 200,000 residents. So if it, if it happens, great. If it doesn't happen, then it just makes us in a better position, I think.
I think the really valuable piece is that we can look at the population growth and kind of convince ourselves that we're doing an adequate job from a water planning standpoint to support that growth. I think it'd be very different if the growth were not able to be supported. So I mean, that is the value of the plan that staff has been able to produce, you know, relying on population projections by others. But I still, I agree. It's, it shows that we are able to support the area.
I think it's a good number. I think we could, I mean, it's a little scary that we might actually grow faster than that. It'd be my fear.
But to Jim, but to Jim's point and being, looking around the state, this is one of the best plans that Water Quality Control Board is ever going to see. And hats off to, to Coachella Valley Water District and the other GSAs in the, in the valley for, you know, working together and putting this together. But especially hats off, Jim, to, you know, the water management team that includes all the people that like Robert working on the state water project and Zoe working on this and Steve Bigley working on the replenishment charges, not charges, but the replenishment programs. And I'm leaving out many, but it takes a big, big team to do this. And I have not seen a better plan in the entire state. So hats off to everybody involved.
Yes, thank you. You know, it makes me wonder if the state really would appreciate what's here. You know, I mean, it's, it's a, partly, we're meeting a regulatory requirement, which is a kind of a mechanical process, you know. Did you satisfy this? Did you satisfy that? And I'm guessing that's how they're going to look at it. But really, it's, it's what we do, you know. I mean, this is, we've been doing it long before Sigma. And it's pretty amazing, all the different efforts that have kind of come together to produce this. Most important thing we do, I think. I'm not necessarily meeting Sigma. That's just part of the, that's sort of a side effect, you know. It's the idea that we can sustain the population and the economy here, even with all the trouble, you know. I mean, you're, you know, there's going to be definitely, I think, you know, haircuts on the Colorado River. Hopefully, it's done in a fair way. And, you know, whether these projects get built in the state, hard to say. I mean, really, you know, are they going to build a conveyance facility? Is that kind of thing? But, but we're ready for it, no matter what they do. Thank you. Any, any other comments or questions? Good, well then
John, I just
Go ahead.
John, I just want to, I just want to thank Zoe as well for an amazing presentation. And I, to Jim's point, she has been the person that's been kind of driving this effort, making sure that everybody is on task, including the consultants, who have also done a great job in putting together all the data from the different agencies and compiling that to create models and, and create all these different scenarios with a lot of different assumptions. But, so it is, it is a complicated document. I think that to the points that you've made, we probably make it look easy just because it's something that I think we've been doing for a long time, way before Sigma. So it almost seems like the foundation to a lot of this was already in place. It was just a matter of updating things or tweaking things. But, you know, a lot of different scenarios, a lot of different levers that you can move. And I think to, to your point, whatever happens, I think whatever happens in terms of the supply from this bucket or another bucket, where it seems like we're prepared to, to be able to adjust and do what we need to do to make sure that we have a sustainable basin and that we continue to manage our water here in the Coachella Valley. I think we're in a very unique position. And I think you're right. I think that the state's probably looking at it from a very mechanical standpoint, where, you know, check off this box, check off this box. But I feel like this document is doing a lot more than that. So I just, I just want to thank Zoe for kind of just grabbing it by the horns and really owning it. So, great job.
Yeah, good, thanks. You know, going back to the original water management plan, it was not the 2010, it was the
2004.
2004, yeah. And you go in there and you look at the assumptions. And I don't know how many golf courses that were already here. There was close to 100. And the assumption projected four new golf courses a year for 25 years. So that was an additional 100 golf courses that we were really getting ready for, right? I mean, we, our job wasn't to decide whether or not somebody's putting in a golf course. But to get ready for it and to be there to be able to sustain that. And of course, that never happened. They were doing four a year. There were several years where they did four new golf courses a year. So it was a reasonable projection, but it didn't happen. And, and that's a huge difference in water use, you know, I mean, that's
When you look at the 2010 plan, it basically represented an increase of 60,000 acre feet a year.
Yeah, yeah.
And now we just have a completely different message.
No, and so I guess my point is, you know, we need to continue to, to be realistic about what we think the projections should look like based on what we know. Because, you know, you only know what we know so far. And, you know, it's not going to be accurate. It'll, we'll miss on some. We might hit some others correctly. But, but then we adapt and move on, right? I mean, we know that that's going to be a big part of this process. It's just, you get, you get as good a projection as you can and then you deal with the reality and adjust as needed in the future. We're lucky because we have so many different sources and I think a lot of opportunity to, to adjust because of that. Good. Well, we have no other business today, so we are adjourned.
Thank you.
10:30, not bad.